...the bottom of record and that was it.
Good evening, welcome to the Joint Planning Commission meetings. We ask for the invitation if you please, and if you'll join us in the pledge of allegiance as well.
Atonement, Father, we're grateful for this day and this opportunity to come together as citizens of this island to discuss the issues. Bless those in attendance, the commissioners, and the staff as we deliberate. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
As we use to see the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for whose it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to review the meeting procedures for everyone. The Planning Commission here requests for preliminary substantial plans by plans. The Planning Commission conducts public hearings on pre-zonings, certain planning documents, and ordinance amendments, which is what we're here doing tonight. Planning Commission makes final decisions on preliminary plots and site plans, and makes recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on all other matters. The planning staff presents the case to the Planning Commission during the staff report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and other applicable regulations. The applicant shall have the opportunity to present their request to the Planning Commission. It is a responsibility of the applicant to make a presentation on the request and to address any conditions or factual findings which they do not agree with. Citizens desiring to speak in favor of or in opposition to the request may then address the Planning Commission. Group should select a spokesperson who may ask the group to stand to be recognized. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chair will ensure that each side has opportunity to be heard. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the Joint Planning Commission for May 23, 2016. Your pleasure.
I move we approve.
Sir, any discussion? Can we see, can we, I don't know, any commission who approves the minutes? And one abstention.
Okay. The main planning commission, I'll accept a motion for approval of the May 23 minutes, 2016. Motion second. Further discussion? Call the question, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Three, four, and one abstention.
Thank you. Mr. Hanley, any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll just jump right into the discussion of the ordinance, the presentation of your report. Thank you.
As you recall, we had public hearing to get input on the initial draft of 507, which was some chance lost record. And at that point, we had some items of input in the split vote, and the decision was to take it to a work session that the planning commissions upheld. And this draft is the result of that. What was, in quick summary, what was removed was the merger of lots on the area. There was also a restriction on the area covered by the lot. The amendment to the St. Simon's Island only. And the inclusion of an item that we thought would try to go to, at dealing with the density better, than just the height issue, but also having a number of sleeping rooms that we use in other areas as a measure of density. So that there would be not only the height restriction, but also the sense of the density of sleeping rooms on a parcel that's substandard. So that's the quick differences between the ordinance sections. You should use the last section we sent you this afternoon when we discovered there were six words that were in the online version that were not actually part of the record.
Does anyone have any questions for staff? No questions?
I do have one.
Thanks.
I would, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, and I've had inquiries about this, that this ordinance change will not yield any currently buildable lots as unbuilt.
No, sir. That would be a taken issue, and this deals with the mass and the density on those lots of record.
Just wanted to clear that up.
All right. Anyone want to speak in favor of this ordinance? It's a public hearing. If you have something you'd like to say, please step to the microphone.
You're opening the public hearing?
Yes, for those who want to speak in favor of the ordinance, I'm asking if anyone wants to speak in favor of it, please step forward.
I'm not rising to speak in favor. I'm rising to sit closer to the microphone.
Well, seeing anyone opposed to the ordinance, would you please come forward and speak up?
Madam Chair, I am Julian Smith, and I live in St. Simon's Island. I am not opposed to the idea of private ordinance. And I appreciate the loss of the reference to the requirement to merge lots. There is less to dislike in this ordinance, but there are still things to dislike. And the ordinance does not yet have a few things that it does need. Let me speak primarily about sleeping rooms. I'm glad to see the limitation on the number of sleeping rooms. I raised the issue of sleeping rooms recently at another meeting. And for the benefit of the people who in the audience who don't know what sleeping rooms are, let me read you the definition in the county's ordinance. A room principally designed to provide sleeping accommodations and usually having a separate bathroom. A room that is not designated on a floor plan as a sleeping room, but which has a separate bathroom or direct access to a shared bathroom shall be considered to be a sleeping room. A room not principally designed for sleeping, which incidentally can be used for sleeping, such as a living room, a sofa bed, or pot, shall not be considered as a sleeping room. So what this ordinance revision proposes is that if your lot is 50% or less of the minimum lot area, or 50% or less than the minimum lot width, you are limited to one and a half story building, 22 feet high above the floor. And you're limited to two sleeping rooms. If this is, if your lot is between 51% or 75% of the required area, you're limited to one and a half stories, 25 feet high, and three sleeping rooms. And if your lot is 75 to 94% of the minimum area, you're limited to one and a half stories and 28 feet high, and four sleeping rooms. And if your lot is 95% to 100%, but not, I'm sorry, to 99%, you can have two full stories and 32 feet, I don't, and there is no limitation on the number of sleeping rooms. And here is the point, and here is the danger. Someone can build a house on a half-size lot with two sleeping rooms. Now, the sleeping rooms, there's no limitation on the size. If somebody builds a place as a second home and is going to rent it out to tourists who visit the facility while they're away, then those two sleeping rooms might have six beds in each one. There's no limit on the number of people who can sleep in a sleeping room. That's not in the ordinance, if I meant the record to Hanley or Mr. Monver correctly. And here is the further caption. A living room, a study, a dining room, a family room, or some other room can be used as a sleeping room, but not considered a sleeping room. So it would be quite easy in one of these 50% sized lots to have two sleeping rooms and two other rooms that could be set aside for sleeping. Perhaps what the county needs in considering the fact that many of these new houses or condos are being used part-time by the owners and are being rented out by villagers, et cetera, for any number of people. Now, the villager might say, "Well, we can't, but the only dozen ones can rent to more than eight people." And people will say, "I know, they shouldn't invite their friends in." So I think there should be eventually in an ordinance a very broad definition or limitation or requirement on the amount of habitable floor space per occupant. And the county might even, for the ordinance, we start considering a limitation on the number of unrelated individuals being in a building in terms of the habitable floor space. So thank you.
Peter Murphy here, it's always difficult following some of his erudite and his well-spoken buddy, but I'll try. I think what he's trying to say, this thing is so complicated, it makes my teeth ache just listening to him. So I rise to express my disappointment. I thought we were going to talk about the limitation of building on substandard lots. And this, in my mind, does nothing of that nature. And as I read through it, and I tried to engage and digest the complexity, it reminded me of a phrase that my mentor, the famous heart surgeon, Dr. Dennis Cooley, used to say when he'd come in the room after one of his trainees made haste of something. He'd say, "Peter, looks like you took something that was awfully simple and made it simply awful." So that's really what I felt when I read this thing. I really couldn't believe it. And when I read through it, I thought it was a parody. I was waiting for them to be a space at the bottom where you were going to have a bedroom inspection task force and how many people were going to be on that. Because really, funny makes the point. You know, how do you read this? How do you police it? And I mean no disrespect, because I know how hard you work. But that does not prevent me from expressing my disappointment. I guess at the end of the day, I was struck by a comment that Commissioner Coleman made in the paper. And with all due respect to Commissioner Coleman, with my common respect, as a very fair-minded and even tempered man, he suggested it didn't make sense to him to have one set of rules for the island and one set of rules with mainland. Maybe that's what you all were wrestling with. Because I was here at the last meeting, and several of the mainland people suggested this really wouldn't work over in Arco. Well, I think it works on the island, and I think this is what the island needs. And it makes no sense at all for me to not have two sets of guidelines. One for the mainland, one for the island. You have an island planning commission, you have a mainland planning commission. You have two sets of people looking at different issues. So I urge you to consider something that makes a little bit more common sense. Thank you very much, and I mean no disrespect. Thank you.
With a couple comments about King City, planted in 1891.
Sir, would you please state your name, state your name, the record. Could you say your name to the record, please?
This is Albert Shalanda.
Thank you.
And I spoke in behalf of my daughter, Amy. And this email, for those who might have been in touch with it now, very good comment. This is King City subdivision, planted in 1891. The King City subdivision is located on South Hall of St. Simon's, on St. Simon's Sound. It was the best area of home ownership at that time. Residents enjoyed true celestial summer breezes and perfection from north wind to the west. It was also near the pier, the Pharaoh's, the Brunson's. Florence Street in King City is located between the beach and Butler Avenue. It is a short street. My family had lived there for many years. Lot 50 Boring on Florence Street belongs to my daughter, Amy. Amy was the official curator and the museum of cultural history. She now has historic preservation work in the Agatha area with their development department. She claims to build her retirement home on Lot 50 Boring. And two years ago, with architect design and a tractor home, which was built over the adjacent Lot 50, also a Lot 40, I think it's most thorough. There are nine residential structures on Florence Street and seven on Lordy's Street. The other two are ten preservation storehouses. The proposed zimmering severely restricts the lot usage in that King City lot. Lot 50 Boring should be rentable, which would conform to the same regulations of Lot 50 A, the house built a few years ago. Now, this is an interesting email I just got from my daughter, Amy. She said she includes word written architect. This is from architect. The residential very large in historic King neighborhood were planted in 1891, or urban lots that were intended for development of a residential township which provided a warm immunity. For an urban design standpoint, there would be a shame to have the current zimmering nature that larger lots on the far as it would destroy this historic fabric and St. Simon's remove so much power. Since that city was a great estate of this area commercially, where the small shops were developed and fallen out of matter and been stripped. King City should be in a special era because of historic venture and with its plant and brand located. And I estimate for a special exception for King City or selfishly as for a grand fathering of Lot 50 Boring. So my daughter has had a red deal to do through the historic society. Won't be penalized. Thank you.
My first reading, architect. I think I just got some questions and perhaps you can answer them for me. First is, there's several lots in St. Simon's and many lots in St. Simon's that the marsh and the weapons are actually part of the lot. How are we going to measure lot area? Is it measured by development area or net area? Or how would that be done?
Lots of record are measured by the recorded lot area.
So the marsh is inside the lot, which is how it is counted?
Because of the way the standards were when they were originally created.
And then the ground floor, you talk about one and a half stories above the one and a half story building, and then 28 feet above the flood elevation. Is the ground floor below the flood elevation considered a story?
Under FEMA rules, yeah. But under our rules, we start at the dirt.
So...
We're not going to penalize you if, if, there's an anomaly under the flood rules. It says if you have a crawl space and you have the dirt above the crawl space, then that bottom area counts as a story. We don't count that. We count as dirt and going up.
Right, so that's a garage, a garage in the ground floor, it would not be considered a story?
No.
And then in Resort Residential District, that's considered a residential district in this ordinance?
Yes, sir.
But this doesn't apply to, I guess, the town counting slots?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Oshie? I have, I guess it's kind of a historical question, and you may not be able to answer it. But when, like, King City was created back around the turn of the century and all, do you have an idea of maybe what size houses you think they would have thought about putting on these lots? They're only like 40 by 80, but...
Well, I think with King City and German Village and Glen Haven, when all those lots were created, they were created without water, sewer, drainage. They were planted. That's all you had. The idea at the time was that it gave ultimate flexibility to the buyer. But that's why you see multiple lots that were ganged up. I don't think it was ever the intent that you would have a single 40 by 80-foot wide lot that would be built. Of course, it come from, it was settled around 2016. There was a 40 by 80-foot piece of ground, in King City, piece of diagonal ground, and somebody drilled deep to try to place a house on it. So I think the idea of the premise behind what you're doing, I think, is sound. The way you do it, I think, has some issues. I know, currently, personally, I'm working on a lot right now in the Resort Residential. 7,500 square feet square feet. That's plenty big. It's 50 feet, maybe 50 feet plus wide. Well, if you just told that gentleman that the house he planned, under this, he would not be able to have that house. So I think there needs to be a little more flexibility when you exceed the, not the area, or maybe exceed the width, you know, maybe there should be a little forgiveness in those cases. I think it's a little too strict for, for, I don't know, I can't see there's a lot of in St. Simon's. I know East Beach, I've watched, a lot of footage of those lots, 55 feet wide. That was, that was a template size there. And so you're telling people with 55-foot wide lot in certain cases, and they are bigger than 6,000 square feet, that they'll have a smaller house than they're making. So I think, I think those issues, I think you need to look at specific areas on St. Simon's and not just try to paint it for a rush.
Right. Well, they do offer the variance option in there, too. I was thinking maybe turn of the century, people who might be building 500 square foot houses versus now putting a 3,500 square foot house on that lot.
No, I don't think that was ever the intent. Now, there are areas in the country that did do that. Go to New Orleans, and you got 25-foot wide lots and millions of homes on them. Of course, there's setbacks on those lots of two to three feet. You literally reach out, you went and touched your ankle.
Right. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Shalanda, I live at 409 High Street in the Glen Haven subdivision. We own three tax substandard lots in Glen Haven. My husband and I purchased a property in 2004 and didn't know that the code that pertains to Glen County would not pertain to Glen Haven. That's other strength for us to come to understand. Glen Haven was developed back in the 1920s as a fish camp. It was never intended for it to be a subdivision. And just think of what's, that was only 100 years ago. And how this city and this county has developed since then. But those laws still pertain to this small, little community of Glen Haven. Now, the church is demolished, and we've lost our neighborhood association. That men and that parish. But Glen Haven is still suffering. We're going to have 16 houses going in, a piece of property that's less than one acre. Now, the Mid County Code would not allow that for a property that is an acre. But if you have less property, you can build 16 houses just by virtue that it's in Glen Haven. I think it's time that we, as taxpayers, get the same consideration that the rest of Glen County gets. Thank you.
Ricky Whitehead, 409 High Street, question. That property is .99173553719005 of an acre. 360 square feet short of being an acre, and it would have been. And would have had been six houses on that lot. But now you got 30-foot lots, you needed two-in lots to a nonprofit to keep it under a acre. If someone was selling that property, they would advertise as one acre. They would say it's .9917353719005 of an acre. I don't know how this got past the Planning Commission. These are all 30-foot wide lots, and this new ordinance that you came up with to win the scope of living or bed spaces, I don't see how that reduces gentry at all. What you're doing is building trailer homes on a 30-foot wide lot. As I don't understand, this needs to be revised.
I forgot to mention, Glen Haven is still under the gun. We have several lots there that are proposed to be developed for more homes. One is a very small lot right next to Adelaide's Paint. That one house has been there, the family's been told that they had to move out because they're going to develop four houses there. One of which is going to be the structure that the William Glen Haven Baptist Church is going to invent to. Four houses on that same lot. I don't see where they're going to park the church doors. But at the same time, that church needed a special use permit to operate in their residential neighborhood. They lost that, is my understanding, by moving, they lost that special use permit, and they could not build and operate as a church without getting another special use permit. I would think that would be a consideration. But there are several of their lots that are going to be in the same situation. They're trying to tear down the trees in the homes and turn it into four, five, and six houses. So this is not going to help us at all. We need some relief.
I would like to ask a few questions of Mr. Hanley, if I may. Julian Smith again, otherwise known as Buddy. Mr. Hanley, do you know approximately how many lots in the, say, the East Beach area or near Mazembe Gable Park and so on, with an easy walking distance of the beach or the village, how many substandard lots there are? Are we talking about hundreds, scores?
Given the geography that you've described, because what we did is we looked more globally. The global answer is in excess of 3,000 in the whole county. But given the area that you described, it's probably in the hundreds.
In the hundreds?
Probably.
And I think we're in a more, say, Glen Haven.
Glen Haven, as has been stated, is basically a combination of 30 and 40-foot lots in that subdivision. So there are, you know, lots, as the slide presenter said, is they're under common ownership, and then there's others that are undeveloped that are sitting there as lots of record that numerous ones are sale and everything, so. But the average lot, the average lot in Glen Haven is a 30-foot lot.
Then I have one more question, which your answer might lead to another. Let me talk about the definition of one and a half story. The illustration you have for the one and a half story shows what looks like a typical St. Kate cottage over where there is, there are bedrooms under the roof. And typically, only half of that space is going to be really habitable, depending on the slope of the roof. Would a building, let us say, 2,000 square feet on the first floor... Would a building, let us say, two thousand square feet on the first floor, two thousand square feet, if someone built on the second story, a half-story that was only one thousand square feet with a flat roof, for instance, would that be a one and a half-story building? Yes or no, or maybe?
The way, the way you describe it, no, it's a two-story building.
I'm sorry?
The way you describe it, it's a two-story building.
It is or is not?
It is a two-story building, the way you describe it.
It would be a two-story building. Even if the building is less than twenty-two feet high, say. But if only half of the upper floor is being used, that's not a half-story. That's, you say that's a two-story building.
Under, under the description you provided, it's a two-story building.
What is the purpose of a half-story designation in terms of square footage?
That, that is a term, term, it's an architectural term, as Mr. Osher can describe. Is, it's an area that does not have a full ceiling height in there. It's typically, as you described, under a Cape Cod scenario, where you have living area, as most, some people refer, refer to it as living in the attic. But there is, there is an area that does not have sufficient headspace to consider a full height, height room in the upper story.
So if a builder or a property owner comes to you with an architectural plan that shows a building with one full story occupying the entire, say, two thousand square feet of the, of the wall space from one wall, from the, within a box, two thousand square feet, and that box is a, is a ten or eleven feet high, are you saying that the person cannot build a second box that is half the floor area and call that a half-story? Even though part of the space will be zero height, with the jack, a balcony, et cetera? Is, you say that would not be legal?
Under the description you gave, it's going to be classed as a two-story building.
Can anyone tell me whether you said yes or no?
Two-story.
That would be a two-story building? Well, I, I think you need to work on the definition. Or is there a definition of half-story ending zoning ordinance? A specific definition?
There is a definition of story in the zoning ordinance. Story is defined in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, okay. Back, I will, I will bring the definition. My name is Steve Law, and I've looked at the newest draft. I'm not an architect, I'm not a lawyer, but I believe it's within the scope of the commission to, to create restrictions for property based on lot size. Just wanted to say something about Glen Haven. I've met Stephanie, but as far as being a fish camp, there was a lake there, but I think if you look at the history, most of the employees that worked for C I M were the residents of Glen Haven. That is what the neighborhood was, if you do the research. And my great-grandfather retired from C I M company. My grandfather was chief electrician through the forties until he went to work at J A Jones Shipyard and then built major facilities for the federal government, like Savannah and the plant coast. It was a neighborhood, and currently, if you look at it, there are people who go to the service industry on the island who live there. This, as far as being a vacation neighborhood, I would disagree, or maybe a vacation home, but there are people that can't necessarily afford a large house but live on the island because they, they work on the island. I looked at what was done in Savannah, as best I could, the new zoning ordinance, and as far as I could tell, there was nothing about lot merger that they call, what's called here, substandard, is called non-conformist in Savannah. And there's a great deal of respect in what it's like to be a grandfather in any of lots that are non-conformist, as best I can tell. But I could not find any merger in what was, what was listed in their ordinances. Because I was grandfathering, I go to Florida and they're ignoring me with the license.
My name is Jerk, I'm a homeowner in Glen Haven. And as a lot we all know, there's a lot of the election problems that are in this meeting.
Could you speak more clearly into the microphone, please? Speak up in the microphone, microphone.
Can you hear me?
That's better. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Y'all don't ask me questions because I can't do this. If I ask for response, I'll ask for shame. I'm going to go a lot of ways. And I know that, the first time you give a brief, particularly reading, with a knowledge. For a lot of what's addressed, you know, we're getting on this agenda, we're asking, only hit the bridge far far from it. The order of command is better dressed, because nobody assumes to advise the fact that it was addressed. We're going to advise that in mind. The orders, the last three orders, I'm talking about the orders, the two and four orders, zoning ordinances and other ordinances. With four hours, big word, an application to be filed with a public major change in the use of each structure or land or the business land, the two or four parcels, or a change in the use of or business provided by the court. By this application, which I can tell, and we can have this situation with my name. Shredders are studied upon the zoning law, which then makes regulations, which then become public knowledge, which is sent to the commission. The residents of the two hundred feet of that property are required to be notified and followed. I do not receive an application. Does anybody receive an application? I assume should the applications be filed. This is true of public hearings. And what I'm talking about is zoning hearings, I'm not talking about a hearing like this. And a zoning decision, but these are all technical, they're all the order of trouble, look up. And a zoning decision did require, the zoning decision has been made on the high department, the application's been made, as I understand it, there have been some, um, premises that were presented. The proposal of this is for a density of eighteen single-family houses per acre. This is R six zoning. R six is the smallest lot size, smallest, uh, front yard width, smallest even, which I can't. It requires six thousand square feet per acre. No more than seven units per acre. Sixty feet minimum front yard. The lots in Glen Haven, as always, were designed, it's not just one of them, were laid out nine years ago. It was a mill village. There was no consideration for storage, utility, or anything. Not a kid. It was a mill village, literally, to supply, uh, uh, the, the building, you know, I'm saying. This eighteen units per acre with a proposal of four bedrooms per unit is seventy-two bedrooms per acre. Okay. Seventy-two bedrooms a residence, seventy-two bedrooms a hotel, maybe, if you've got a hotel that counts. Okay. I think we all understand what it is, and if, if, if anybody doesn't understand what we're talking about and we're having a talk down in my place. I want to read you from the minutes of the, uh, commission, been ten years ago. Ten years ago. And then you did that, so I'm not, not going to read the whole thing, I'm going to do that. Where else, a lot of where else is here? Many of the substandard lots, of which were named consistent with house. My home is built on two substandard lot lots that combined, only a regular standard block. Many of the substandard lots of regular Glen County consist of one structure built upon a combination of one or more whole adjacent substandard lots or one whole substandard lot combined with a portion of an adjacent substandard parcel. And whereas, in recent years, the owners of these combined substandard lots have begun to re-subdivide these combined substandard lots by demolishing the existing structure and selling these combined lots or portions thereof individually. And whereas, the number of applications for building permits for construction on these re-subdivided substandard lots has increased in recent years. And whereas, the greater, the granting of these building permit applications has allowed two structures to be built on the same combined substandard lot that previously contained only one. And in some cases, has allowed construction of a structural lots that are attached on the portions of another substandard parcel. Okay. Let's, let's put this on, let's put this on the frame. My, my house. This is my annual notice of assessment. It lists two lots, lot twenty-six and twenty-four, block fourteen. According to what the legislature in Glen Haven, I can hack my house down tomorrow, build two houses on my two substandard lots that combined make one substandard lot. I can re-subdivide them, divide them, and come up with twenty-four hundred square foot lots that have a thirty-foot front. I can do that, according to what this proposal does. Everybody thinks that's okay, once you're in? Everybody thinks that's okay? Don't think I'll be able to scam my house down and build two houses on my fifty-foot lot. I don't think that's good, but if I hack my, I can build a lot. Okay. Trying to figure out how to make this thing. Whereas, these building permit applications are headed to the second five oh seven, so it's that have posed significant problems in the effective and efficient implementation of the county's zoning ordinances and contribute to growth and development that hamper Glen County's ability to regulate development density, to provide adequate infrastructure and drainage, and to provide the necessary services for its citizens. Well, I think seventy-two acres, uh, seventy-two bedrooms per acre probably isn't enough pretty good. I think ten three foot wide houses and thirty-five feet high, send them to work, up and down the street. Actually, that's pretty good. Let me back up just a minute. Some of the things, purposes of Glen County zoning and zoning ordinances are to conserve, to protect, to be happy, economic and seamless resource of the local general. Because the first thing this developer did without a formal, like, is cut down the earth and cut all, all the brick over, and let the lot. That's conserving and protecting the natural environment, protecting the future. Regulating, a reasonable consideration of the density of assets and the very little pieces and their particular physical abilities of the county's resources. With a view of providing desirable living conditions. I don't want this stuff up the script for me. I don't think you've got all the reason. And sustainable development, protecting against blight and appreciation, security and governmental expenditures, conserving the valuable buildings living there won't conserve the value of home. Their house will rapidly not be, then be stolen, or nobody can come through the place, or, or down the street. And other structures throughout the county. Through the vent and reduce traffic congestion, manage to eliminate competition maintenance problems when lots are laid out, that proper consideration of that. Built just a low place in Glen Haven. Nineteen forty-nine, right next to where we're talking about, it was Silver Springs Lake, a very large lake, all right across the, right there. Low place, and a nice structure. And, like a brick over, or is it that much more?
Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, hello, Mr. Jones. I'm going to ask you to please wrap this up pretty soon. Please wrap this up pretty soon. Wrap it up.
Can you hurry up?
Yep, please, please wrap it up for us. We have other folks that may want to speak.
I think you're a lot back to the order, Mr. Jones. Okay. Um. Where the Glen County Order Commission thinks it necessary, vows it will invest in helping the cost parity of welfare of the citizens of Glen County, that's up. To enact these commitments, for the Glen County's own, that is, therefore, a man. Okay. Okay. There's a lot of talk about lots on the record. And this is five, a lot of records, as I get the words, two thousand and seven. Where a recorded deed conveyed, conveys more than one contiguous tract of land, lot of tracks, including quite a lot of tracks identified on a recorded subdivision plot. That's Glen Haven, they're all identified, they're all twenty-four unstructured lot lots that have been there back in ninety years. But they're contiguous, that's what we're talking about. Merge into a single convenience. Okay. This particular sixteen lots has been conveyed in this town this year as a single convenience, all the way into the ordinance here. And described in and conveyed by such deed, now look it up. Shall we constitute a lot record? Uh-oh, we got a lot record. This is constituting a lot record now. A lot record is no longer sixteen of lots. It's the one parcel that is being conveyed for tactics to assist of the different pieces of property. Not standing that state structure includes more than one parcel of land otherwise shown on a recorded seventeen plot. Okay. What this says about the Glen Haven law is that it is one parcel, it's contiguous, there were some latest contiguous, and it must be re-subdivided or whatever before anybody can do it on the record. You can't come in and just say, oh, I'm going to tear my house down, and I'm going to build two houses, and there's nothing anybody can know about. It is that more, not too far in the end. A zoning law. Have a drainage on the designated second street and have a not rest of the minimum area required by the regulations for lots of thirty feet. We need to set forth a line of code, and this guy's a six thousand. Okay, this order says that you can't come in. Okay, this ordinance says that you can't come in and re-subdivide a piece of property that has been conveyed as a, a contiguous conveyance, particularly long term, and has been a single piece of property on the, on the books as such for the last seventy years with a loud drum around it and used for a particular purpose. Without going through a rezoning, and the rezoning has to be a valid standard of the top of the bill, which is a hard set.
All right, thank you, thank you.
You don't, you don't tell me like that, Tom.
I think, I think we've, I think we've, I think we've got the picture.
You've exceeded your time.
Thank you.
Anybody who wants to make that, I'll be glad to talk to you, we'll play this thing right down to the wire.
All right.
All right, do we have anyone else who wants to speak? Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Watson, Peter Murphy again. Uh, so what I'm hearing, and as I travel around the island and talk to people, I think we really are getting tired of the high-volume, high-density development, building on the island. As you know, it's outstripping the infrastructure, and that's where the problem lies, and I don't believe the present proposal, uh, does anything, uh, to, to, to meet that, uh, meet that issue. And I implore you to consider, uh, revising what you've come up with, and again, with all due respect of the hard work. My final comment, the gentleman earlier was suggesting that, uh, people who might work on the island need affordable housing, and I've, and I've heard that argument, and I'm very sensitive to that. As of three or four weeks ago, the last time I did my Google search, there are eight hundred homes for sale on the island. Somebody might argue that point one way or the other, but the median sale price, not the asked price, the sale price is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So there is affordable housing on the island without building homes on substandard lots. I, I just, I, I'm done now. There's substandard because there's substandard, and I think that, uh, reflects the feeling of most of the people on the island. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, Linda Williams. I just need some clarification on the way the wording and which way goes. For example, on any of these, you say if the area is between fifty percent and seventy-five percent, um, then it dictates what size house can be built. But it says or, the front width, which prevails? Pardon? Well, let's say you have a fifty-seven hundred square foot lot, and the width, front width is fifty. Which of these scenarios is going to apply?
You, it's going to go through both tests. It's going to go through both tests, and see what category it falls into.
Well, for example, fifty-seven hundred square foot lot that's fifty feet wide is, um, ninety-five percent of the entire area, and, but it's, uh, eighty-three percent of the width. So are you going to go with the stricter?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, second question, is a present home, say in St. Simon's Heights, sitting on two lots of record, fifty feet, five hundred and fourteen each, can that house be taken down and two houses built that meet this criteria?
Uh, under this proposal, yes, ma'am, it could.
Thank you.
I apologize for standing up in the end, or Steve, I wanted to respond to Mr. Murphy, um, he actually reached the lady, he calls up some, well, the mic.
Pick the mic up, Sam.
I can't read that. Uh, but I think it's a ban on the terminology that was not conforming, uh, substandard, there's actually a legal term of disparagement of the property that you don't know what I enter into, but, uh, non-conformant means that, that they don't conform give the new standard. And, uh, the older lots don't conform give new standard, but maybe, was it nineteen sixty-seven, sixty-eight? Um, so the non-conformant, does it mean that they should be world-class? Well, we can argue that, but they, it's hard to erase what's been imposed in the courthouse at that end, it would be very hard to erase that. Uh, they existed before it, they, they intended to exist. Uh, to erase those, I, I believe would be, uh, say, would be, uh, surely a legal complexity. Uh, but we need to set standards for the county from here on that addresses all, all the problems that we've mentioned. But to, to go back and try to erase what, what any of those all run down, some of these laws is, uh, partly is a legal complexity and I, I, I would disagree with very much. But again, as far as some prescriptions, on what can be built on that lot, I believe that's within the scope of county commission, I give no, no judgment on that, and just wait and see what happens.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak, uh, against this ordinance? Are you in favor of it?
Yes.
Please step up.
Can you hear me? Okay, Mary Catherine Hendricks, uh, home lot one twelve on Broadway, it is a quote, substandard lot. Um, Mr. Murphy, my question for you is, um, I've all that lot is a legal lot of record, are you saying you would like for me to not be able to build on that lot? Um, I'm fine.
It's going to stop you from building on that lot.
Well, that's the comment that he just made, that he would like to see no buildings, only substandard lots. Um, I'm fine with this proposal, I'm fine with following the rules of this proposal and building a house like it should be built. I have a six thousand square foot lot, it just happens to be fifty feet wide. Um, I've already sold my home that I live in, I'm waiting to start building, I have a builder who would like to pull permits, and, um, we're stuck. So yes, I would like to see this pass, I would like to follow the rules, and I'd like to build an appropriate house on that lot. But to say that the people of St. Simon's don't want to build, don't want to see buildings or houses on these lots, I disagree with that. I'm a schoolteacher, I live in St. Simon's, I've lived on St. Simon's for thirty years, and I'd like to build a house on my lot. It's a legal lot of record. So I agree with this. I, what I would not like to see is another defer, and for me to be stuck for another sixty days waiting for something to be done.
And thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? All right, then, uh, one more. Okay, Mr. Bryson.
Very nice, and, uh, just a clarification, David, did I understand correctly that the, uh, floors that are listed in here are levels, are, are having the levels? So you could still have a, I mean, an unhavocable floor where they could do the garage or storage or...
Right, but you still got the, you still got the height cap. You're still going to have a height cap. So, but if it's in a flood elevation, we, we still measure from base flood elevation.
Well, what, what I prefer not to see, I, I've lived on St. Simon's for thirty-nine years. Uh, for the last nineteen years I've lived in Glen Haven, that, that's my home, I actually started out in Glen Haven thirty-nine years ago, I lived there for a couple of years. What I would prefer not to see is Glen Haven become quite a lot. And the last twenty years is vastly improved, is now a, a community of, of families, young families and children, uh, love to see, I play in the yard, and I prefer that we not take Glen Haven back to a rental community, uh, which when I moved there thirty-nine years ago was drug invested, and I prefer not to see that occur again. And, and we limit these houses to such a small size that no one's got the little store to park their car, or park their toys with their bicycles or those things, then we're heading in the wrong direction. Just would like for you to give some consideration to that. Thank you, officer.
Thank you, is there anyone else who wants to speak? All right, the public, uh, hearing is closed, and we're going to go into discussion. Commissioners, anyone who wants to have a discussion on this item, please?
First, maybe we want to get the attorney to address some of those issues that were brought up, that from a legal standpoint, that was read. Continuous, well, lots of record, uh, if there was a lot of record, I think what he was saying, if you had a lot, three lots, you had a house on one, it now is a lot of record of three. Uh, of one rather than three, which had been in the books, uh, there was some confusion there to me of what legality is of conveyance. If I go buy two lots, is it now only one lot? It's kind of what was inferred, and I'd like a...
So we're talking about the merger, merger.
No, I'm talking about what the gentleman talked about, when he said that in Glen Haven, let's go with the specific, that in Glen Haven, there was a church sitting there, and then it was sold, is now only one lot, and the only way to go to the sixteen that's a lot of record is go through a zoning ordinance, and that's not my understanding, but I'd like to get your opinion.
Right, uh, and Mr., Mr. Jones, I think it was, the one that spoke on that.
Yes.
Um, so the issues he's talking about were, I guess, brought to my attention this morning, and we are looking into that, uh, the, the, um, documentation that he provided, so we're looking into that, but, you know, over the last, you know, nine or so years, the, the merger concept, and that was what was initially proposed, was not in place. So, uh, ultimately, what I think is going to happen is that, uh, if you have two houses on one lot, I'm sorry, one house on two lots, sorry, and you tear down that house, you're going to have two substandard lots still. I think ultimately, that's what's going to be in play, although we are looking into the documentation that was provided this morning, or brought to my attention this morning, but I think ultimately, it's going to be, still going to be two substandard lots on that one house that's strata block lines.
Another, another comment, then after that, is there was some statement thrown out about seventy-two bedrooms per acre, and that, in this proposal, there's no way to do, that happens. The most have with this record is about thirty-six bedrooms per acre. So forget that number of seventy-two, that's not possible, no matter what, ever how you define the size of the lots, because a small lots can have the two bedrooms, twenty-four hundred square feet, if there is some, a number of lots of twenty-four hundred square feet, that gets you about eighteen houses with two bedrooms, is thirty-six. If you have three thousand square foot lots, then you get, uh, three thousand into forty-two, you get sixteen houses, and two is thirty-two. So the, the number of bedrooms is going to be, with this proposal, is going to be equal to, or less than, the number of bedrooms, sleeping rooms, let me use the right terms, sleeping rooms in the rest of the county, in the rest of the island, which most of it's thirty-five, except in R and R where it's thirty. So those numbers don't, don't hold of that. As we went through all the discussion on this, these items, and trying to come up with things that would make it better, you got two sides, you got somebody that owns a lot of rec, a substandard lot of record, and they've owned that for, uh, many years, do they have a right to build on it? And, you know, I'm going now with my opinion, not what the rest of the board may or may not feel, they can tell you theirselves, but in my opinion, if I own the lot, and I've owned it for a number of years, I have a right to use that lot. Now, the rules are set on how I can use it, and we are redefining how I can use it. And that is all within the realms of what county can do. I don't have any problem with them redefining how I can use my lot, as long as I can use it. By defining the size, the lot, the house size you can build is defined already. If you have a three thousand square foot lot, and it's thirty-five hundred, your ground, the amount of square foot you can put on the ground is eleven hundred and sixty-eight foot, if you go from side yard, side yard, backyard, and front yard, you can put eleven hundred and sixty-eight square foot on the ground. If you have a forty-five hundred square foot house, you can put twenty-two hundred and sixty-three square foot on the ground. That's the size of the house, the floor print, footprint of the house. You can go up a half level and get something there. Those are the numbers. If you have a four thousand square foot lot, one thousand seven hundred and fifty-two, these are assuming the lots are some width by a hundred. If you change those dimensions, it may change somewhat, but those are kind of the square foot of the house that's going to be built. So the idea was to try to build houses that were comparable to what was in that, in those areas, make it more compatible, and I said just before, when we originally came, you had in the village area, houses could be built no more than ten foot taller than the house around them. Try to work through that if you'd like. So I built a house twenty years ago, and I went up ten foot, now you go come back to build a house, can you go ten foot higher? We changed that, made it all straight thirty-five feet. That fit made sense, made this fit, and looks like something that's better. You got to look at both sides of it, what some of you want, less people on the island, what the people that own the property want is to be able to build on it. We got to come to a consensus on how we're going to do that. This looks like a reasonable consensus on how to do that. Preston's exactly right, we worked hard on this, trying to be fair to all sides, and one thing you got to think about is that property owner, who owns that substandard lot, which I don't like that term, but that's what it is. We have to be fair to them, you just can't say, all of a sudden, you can't build on this lot that you've been paying taxes on for however how long. All these problems were created, not decades ago, over a hundred years ago in some cases, and it's hard to fix that in today's world. You know, it's just, it would be easy to say, okay, county go buy all those substandard lots, and then rezon them, replat them and everything else to a, to a standard size, that's not going to happen. Uh, I think the issue of number of sleeping rooms, you go to a five-bedroom house now, anywhere on this island, you're going to see other rooms that are used as sleeping rooms, and I don't know how you stop that unless the county appoints a bed checker every night, and maybe Mr. Smith could take that job, because how's he going to do it? How are you going to regulate how many sleeping rooms you have in a house? Are you going to have a Gestapo going in and checking it? I don't think we want to do that. And this idea that two hundred and eighty thousand dollars is a low number, for some families, that's a very tough mortgage payment to pay, uh, simply because this is St. Simon's, do we need to have four, five, six hundred thousand dollar homes? I think we need a combination of the both. I think it's very elitist to say, we just going to have this on this island, and everything below that, you go to the mainland. I don't like that idea at all, I think it's wrong, and, uh, you know, you have a smaller house, it's going to have a smaller value to it. If you live on Sea Island, you live on Frederica, in Frederica, you can have a four, five, six, ten million, twenty million dollar house, great. But on St. Simon's, there's areas that you can't do that, and I don't think we want to do that. So this has not been easy. What we have done, though, is reduce the density by looking at this, and it's not perfect, and we can't get perfect. We, we, I think we've tried to keep the homeowner in mind, the property owner in mind, and the residents of mind who don't have a substandard lot, or maybe next door to it, or whatever the case is, but we've got to be fair as, as much as we can to everybody involved. And as Preston says, I think this is the best solution that we've been able to come up with, without penalizing the property owner, and we can't do that.
I'd like to just add, that's exactly my feelings, and I, those, those of you who know me know I'm, I'm a traffic guy, and I've looked at the numbers, and we can't build everything that's on the books right now, and, and be sustainable. We're going to have to do some, some things differently, and at the same time, I'm, I'm very much in favor of property rights, and I don't want to take away people's property rights. I think this is a good compromise, we have worked hard with this, and I think it's a good direction to go in.
Anyone else have a comment?
Hope we can stay quiet.
I have a comment about, a question came up as to whether you have, in one portion of it, you have the width and in another second part of it, you have the area of the lot. And Mr. Hanley's response was, we would be, have the more restrictive application. I think that needs to be, that needs to be put, that language needs to be put in 507.2, A, B, C, D, that the more restrictive application shall apply. And I think that would help with the clarification of it because that's not going to be the only time that's going to be asked. Yes, sir?
So if, when you make a motion, if it's a favorable motion, if you could include that language in that, as part of the motion, so it goes forward to the board?
Okay. If that's everyone's pleasure, but I just think that would be necessary clarification. Any more discussion? All right, first, I'll entertain a motion from the commissioners.
Okay.
I move to recommend to the county commission to approve ordinance 507, substandard lots with the addition that a more restrictive measurement will be used in the calculation of the height and bedroom, sleeping rooms. Right?
It was to the area or the width, because it says...
Yeah, but that, but it restricts the height and number of bedrooms. That's the purpose of that calculation.
So, so that, that the more and more restrictive of the combination of the height and the width would be the determining factor on the number of bedrooms and the height and...
The more restrictive calculation of width and square foot would be used in the determination of the height and number of sleeping rooms.
Right, with an area. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous? That's unanimous on the island?
Okay. May I, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Just for clarification, it does state in here that the section 507.2 should be applicable exclusively to St. Simons Island. So that is the portion that dealt with what was just mentioned back here, about one and a half stories, two stories, number of bedrooms, whatever. So that is not going to be part of the mainland.
Correct.
Correct. So really, at least it's with 507.1 and 507.3 and 507.4. Can't even for the life of me, I've been doing this six years, can figure out why on earth we would want anything like that for mainland Brunswick. I mean, it's, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And so if that's what we're voting on, Mr. Chairman, you know, the mainland and not as it applies to St. Simons, which obviously to us is a kind of a different animal, I would make the motion to deny.
Okay, well, you're saying that the 507.1 is what you don't approve of being...
Well, one, we're exempt from two. Would also apply to three and four to us because we're not exempt from it.
Three just talks about a variance application on it, which we would want that. On 507.1...
But if we don't want the ordinance changed at all, then why would we even have a variance for something we don't even want this to apply to? We have an appeals process for something we don't even want an ordinance for, which I don't think would make a lot of sense. That's what I'm saying.
Well, most of the lots, I think, are going to be of record that are substandard on the mainland right now. And even though it does say on here...
And if the county attorney would chime in and...
About not being able to build on...
Let us know what really truly is applying to the mainland from this ordinance, because maybe I don't understand that.
As far as the mainland is concerned, all that's really changing here is the definition of a substandard lot of record. The mainland already has substandard lots.
Right.
And that's anything that's less than the required width or area. However, this adds the lot width to the definition of substandard. So that's what's being added for the mainland. The portion about the building height, the number of bedrooms, et cetera, that does not apply to the mainland.
So we're restricting the existing language that already exists by saying that we're, we're restricting the existing ordinance that does not have the language in it about lot widths?
Correct. You're adding that to the definition of a substandard.
Okay.
So that if it doesn't meet the lot width or the lot area, it becomes, it is substandard. Currently, only the lot area is considered to be a substandard lot.
So if we vote for this, we are now applying a new ordinance to the mainland, saying that if you have a lot of record or a substandard lot that's less than 60 feet or 50 feet, whatever it might be, then this ordinance is going to apply, not 507.2, but...
It does. And some of the rationale behind that is that if it's less than 60 feet wide, 50 feet, you know, what about if it's 40 feet or 30 feet? So it's still, it's still substandard in the sense that it presents, I think, from a planning perspective, that staff some issues as far as the development of it. I mean, David could probably speak to that more than I can, but that was some of the thing behind the lot width. Because you can have a lot width, but yet still have a lot width that's smaller than 60 feet, but have more, you know, 6,000 square feet of area, but it presents some planning problems or issues for David Hanley and his staff. So that was the thing behind adding the lot width to that definition.
We don't mind working him a little harder. That's, that's not an issue. He does a good job at that. Mr. Chairman, I just, I don't like the idea of restricting a already depressed market that in, in the mainland as far as restricting the way in which somebody could develop a piece of property. So my motion stands for denial.
Got a motion?
Saying that this won't even apply, any of it would apply to...
Correct.
One second.
You got a motion, a second, a deny? Comment here. You're still allowed to build on a substandard lot on the mainland, lot of record on that. But we just don't have the restrictions that they have on St. Simons though, for it.
Right, this is, would add a restriction to that.
Well, if it's legally a lot of record...
He just said 60 feet. Anything less than 60 feet or less?
Well, here it says though, but if it was official, it's a, if it's an official lot of record though, these requirements, I mean, if it's less than 60 feet wide, am I correct? Then it's a lot of record on the mainland? You're still allowed to build on it? For requirements, there's no restrictions.
It just defines, that it used to say just area and the word width has been added into there too.
Correct. But if it is still a lot of record, there is no restrictions on the mainland as far as what you can build on it, like, like what we're trying to do to St. Simons.
How about if it's a substandard lot?
You talking about a, like a lot that has been further subdivided?
Mm-hmm.
Then I assume you'd have to apply for a variance? If you had a lot of record, there were a portion of it was removed, somebody cut off five feet, they'd have to apply for a variance?
Yeah, because then raises issues as to its legal status as a legal lot of record. So it depends when it was done. It, it, it all depends when the division occurred as to what status it's going to be due, but it would raise potential issues on that lot.
But they still could apply for a variance.
It can still build because we cannot restrict you from building on a substandard lot as defined in the ordinance.
Okay.
And if I understand correctly, staff has already, already considers that to be substandard. So this almost brings in line what staff considers to be a substandard lot as far as the width goes. So this brings it in line, but it's correct that this doesn't necessarily restrict the development on that lot. It just helps clarify and refine what that substandard lot is, that it doesn't meet the standards of today of 60 foot wide lot and at least 6,000 square feet. So you're just kind of categorizing it. But because 507.2 does not apply to the mainland, there's really no restrictions on the definition of a substandard. We're just identifying it and categorizing it. As a, as a lot that existed prior to the zoning ordinance coming into play in the 60s. That's really all that does. That was more of, you know, I think, I want to say house cleaning, but it was more to bring it in line what staff was already considering to be a substandard lot.
Did the county quantify the number of substandard lots on the mainland in addition to the island?
No, we just looked geography wise regardless of where they are. I mean, the majority of them are on the islands, but they are also on the mainland too.
Do you know approximately how many?
There's probably hundreds on the mainland. And it's primarily in the older sections around Brunswick.
And that, that's unincorporated, Glen County only?
In unincorporated, yes.
Okay. That would be mainly the ARCO area?
Yes, sir. But as we've discussed before, you know, there's going to be nonconforming lots or substandard lots in all areas that they had today. For instance, today I dealt with six lots in one subdivision that are in zone GR, general residential. They're all half acre, but they're also supposed to be on water or sewer and there's no water and sewer out there. So they're all substandard lots of record. So, you know, you can have different categories about where you meet the area at that because those are all supposed to be, you know, quite that size.
Do you see this in any way, holding back or restricting anyone who wanted to go build a new home in the ARCO area?
No, sir.
Not on a lot of record, no.
No.
If that lot had been modified since it was created as a lot of record, then yes, it could, they'd probably have to apply for a variance is where I understand it to build. So. Go with your motion?
What's still there? Okay. You got a motion? And a second?
Call the question. Call in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. Two for, uh...
Two against.
Again. Two against.
There you go.
So you got the, no, no action tape in there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes that for the ordinance. And we have other business and that is the meeting schedule.
Yes, ma'am. You have a meeting set for this room one week from today.
So we'll be meeting here at work on the 21st or...
Yes, ma'am.
June.
21st in June. You'll be here and in July, you'll be at St. William.